Okay, very good. It looks like we are live. So we will open up the virtual regular meeting for the BAR, I believe is what tonight is. Wednesday, December 16th, 2027, 7 o'clock. Can we get roll call, please?
It's our Commissioner Winn.
Present.
Oops, one second, I gotta pause my YouTube. Okay, Commissioner La Micah. Commissioner Evan. Nope, Commissioner Evans, I didn't hear you, sir.
I just love that mute button here.
Commissioner Dodson. Vice Chair Spalletta.
He may be. Present. Vice Chair Spalletta gave me a call. He's gonna try to get in, but he has two other Zoom meetings for work.
Outstanding. Okay, great. Well, for the record, we still have a quorum.
Okay, review of agenda items. If there's any items that have arose after the 72-hour posting deadline, this is the point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to the agenda. Have we got anything, Leslie?
No, sir, no changes.
Okay, public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board on matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside, but not on the agenda items, may do so during the public comment period for up to two minutes. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please state your name.
Okay, so I did not receive any written communications prior to this meeting. We do have one attendee on the webinar. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise your hand feature and we'll call on you if you'd like to make a general public comment. Mr. Chair, I don't see a hand raised, so no public comment.
Very good. We will close public comment and go for approval of minutes. October 28th, 2020, special meeting and November 18th, 2020, regular meetings. Has everybody read the minutes?
Yes, I read them and I would like to make one correction for the October, I think, 28th minutes. And in the description of voting for the matter concerning the changes for cell towers, I was marked as abstaining on that. And since I proposed to approve it, I'm pretty sure I didn't abstain. I voted yes, like everybody else in commission.
Thank you for checking that. I will make that correct.
And just so that you know, Leslie, Mr. Silva is listed as Dave Evans, number two.
My evil twin, Skippy.
You know, you know why I did, I did not get a link and Dave forwarded me his link. So I'll change my name here. My apologies.
Oh darn, I was hoping I could vote twice.
You can't do it, I can do it.
Ah darn.
Very good. Okay. So with that correction on the minutes, do we have a motion? And the correction would be Mr. Dodson did not, he was part of the voting.
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, business items. Board of Architecture Review Application BAR 20-11. Recommendation.
Do we have to roll call on those or is that minutes is no big deal?
Leslie.
We should roll call on them. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. I totally forgot about that this week.
All that Zoom stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Winn.
Aye.
Commissioner La Micah.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Silva.
Aye.
Commissioner Dodson. And Chair Owens.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Okay, under business items, number A, Board of Architecture Review Application BAR 20-11. Recommendation in accordance with city and municipal code, architecture review approval is required for the construction of all second-story elements, including decks or single-family residence.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
My apologies if I cough occasionally. I am fighting off a cold, but we will proceed forward. So this is a Board of Architectural Review application for a second-story deck located at 1955 Grandview Street in Seaside. Location map is on your screen. This home was purchased by the applicant and property owner Zachary Grover in 2017. The deck was existing. The previous deck was 80 square feet. You can see a photo of it on the right. And then the front view is a photo on the left. So it is a 6,000-square-foot lot, which is developed with a 2,200-square-foot two-story, single-family residence. The home had a two-story deck on it and due to water intrusion and wood rot, the original deck was removed in October of this year. At that time, Mr. Grover decided to replace the original deck with a new 160-square-foot deck. During construction, a stop-work order was ordered by the city's code enforcement officer, to which Mr. Grover complied. Mr. Grover has since been working with the city to properly approve the new 160-square-foot deck. So this deck was, as I've mentioned previously, in existence. We do know that it was in existence at least in 2007. You can see the little red strip where the deck pops up here. This is a Google image capture. It was still there in 2013. Our Google images don't go back any further, but there was a patio cover, which was approved back in the 70s, which probably turned into this. But it did happen prior to the purchase of the home by the applicant. This is a photo of below showing the former deck. And then the new deck up above. The deck materials is constructed from 2x6 redwood boards as well as 4x4 redwood boards for the posts. And then there is Dyneema steel cable ringing for the railing. The site plan on the right shows you the setbacks. They are very ample. It is a 20-foot setback from the rear property line to the new deck. And from the side property lines, it varies at the smallest, smallest portion, it's 13 feet, 10 inches. At the widest, it is 16 feet. Neighborhood compatibility, as with any second-story element, this is a large concern. So houses on this west side of Grandview are predominantly two-story, and many of them do have existing second-story deck elements, including both of the houses on either side, both the left and the right. The proposed 160-square-foot deck would not be out of scale or uncharacteristic in this neighborhood. One other thing I did want to point out, as you can see, the deck located here doesn't have as much of an impact on the neighboring property of 1945. You can see that the deck kind of lines up with the very rear portion of their yard. It does not impact 1960, which is blocked by the existing developed portion of the single-family residence located here. It is really the two, the two residences down below on Noche Buena, which are downgrade, that have more of an impact due to an increased deck size. Here we have some photos coming from Noche Buena heading south, where you can see the deck. You can also see the second-story deck element of the neighboring property just over to the left here. So the deck really isn't viewable from this portion of Noche Buena. As you head down Noche Buena, right at the corner of Playa Avenue, you can see the deck. This is the old deck, not the new deck, though it would protrude out another four feet. It's not going to be a scale that you actually notice a change in. And then this is looking from the, looking to the north from Noche Buena as well, what you can see of the deck from the street view. Based on staff analysis, this project is consistent with the zoning ordinance and the findings. The proposed use is allowed and it is consistent with our setback requirements. This required side setback is five feet for such developments. The minimum setback is 13 feet, 10 inches for the proposed deck. The rear yard setback is 15 feet. The applicant has proposed a 30-foot setback. The deck is also in compliance with Section 1762030 of the Seaside Municipal Code. The deck has been designed to be consistent in quality, scale, and architectural relationship with the site. The proposed second-story deck is consistent with design of other residences on the west side of Grandview. No significant visual impacts to the adjacent properties. As with any second-story element, there are privacy impacts to adjacent properties. The proposed deck would be able to support additional people, occupants, occupants or visitors of 1955 Grandview beyond what was already existing with the unpermitted 80-square-foot deck. This could result in increased noise and disturbance to neighbors located to the south and west of the subject property. The existing single-family residence blocks the deck from properties located to the north and east. However, given that the proposed deck was in existence before, given the large setbacks, and given that no neighboring properties have submitted comments in opposition to this project, staff feels that the proposed 160-foot deck would not result in significant increased privacy impacts. This project is also consistent with the general plan. It promotes the repair, improvement, and rehabilitation of housing in order to enhance the quality of life in neighborhoods. And also protect the character of single-family neighborhoods by restricting out-of-scale buildings and compatible uses, blocked views, or access to sunlight. It also allows the applicant to maintain and enjoy the magnificent views from Seaside. Based on this analysis, staff does recommend approval of this application, subject to the conditions of approval, project plans, project description, and material specifications. If you do have any questions, I would be happy to answer. The applicant is also attending the meeting and I'm sure would like to say something and would be available to answer questions as well. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, anything? I do have one question. I noticed on the, on the, let's see, right below page, packet page 24, all that we're seeing so far is what the owner designed. Being this, this is BAR, it appears to me that we should have an engineer stamp on this prior to us okaying anything with this with BAR, because there could be more wood that has to be added in order to secure that deck now that it's post-held. Especially that it, how did it attach to the house? I looked at his drawings and I just think that we should be seeing an engineer stamp on this before it comes to BAR, so we know there's no more changes in the wood that's going to go in there as far as angle braces to hold this thing. According to the, what I read on this, it was water damage, so you have screwed into the wood of the water damage supposedly. I just want to make sure that an engineer looks at this because he hasn't, if you look at the beam when he comes off of that, Dana, he's got an overhang there where if you get a crowd of people on that, that deck could fall forward, just like what happened in Oakland. So I personally would like to see an engineer stamp on this so that we ensure that nothing else is going to be added to what we're seeing right now, so that we can.
If the condition of approval, that if any additional design changes are required, that would visually change how the deck is currently proposed, that they would have to come back to bar.
It seems to me. It seems like we should have the drawings and we should see how this is going to be a finished product in front of BAR, not give them an okay and then come back later. This should all be done ahead of time. This person put this thing in without a permit. And all's we're seeing is some ISO paper where he scribbled on it with this deck. He doesn't show the overhangs off of those beams for how much weight gets out in front of that beam. I just think for me to look at this, Dana, I would want to see the engineer stamp and the plans prior to it coming to a meeting like this.
I will definitely note that for future, and if that's something that we feel we want before making a motion on this, we could continue the item condition on getting those engineered stamp plans.
I would feel much better on that. If that thing falls, you know, we put our okay on it and we put an okay on something that was a homeowner's drawing, not, not even an architect, which according to the paperwork, one is coming. Well, we should see that in BAR before, as far as I'm concerned.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly, Mr. Silva, go ahead.
So I understand the chair's concerns and just, but in follow-up to that, if, if the applicant had not started the work beforehand, if he was just going through the process with the proper, you know, application and with the drawings, at the BAR, BAR stage of the process, what would be required? Just sort of the elevational drawings and a floor plan drawing? If I understand correctly, we would be reviewing the conceptual plans and the actual building plans, the architecture and engineering would be reviewed by the building department. That would be later, is that correct?
I believe that is correct. Gloria can maybe weigh in. I'm pulling up our submittal plans just to make sure, but I don't know if we will require engineered plans, so bear with me.
Yeah, while she's digging, this is Gloria Sterns, Community Development Director. Typically before the bar, they would usually be looking at issues of the materials, the aesthetics of it, how did the design of that fit in with the context of what it had. There was some concerns about structure, but it would usually be like the railings in a relationship to, are they of the proper height? And materials and things like that. It was more of the aesthetics for the architecture. And then they would go through the building. There's a condition that's always put on it that they have to have engineered drawings and everything, and our building official tends to look at everything for the structure. The building department is the one that absorbs the the liability issues for reviewing all of the plans for structural issues.
So. And I am reading our current submittal requirements and it is just that plans are accurate to scale using an architect's or engineer's scale, but we don't require them to be stamped by an engineer at this initial review process. That is part of the building permit.
So I know I've submitted hand-drawn things to the city for permits on my own house. And granted, I'm in the industry, my hand drawing is maybe a little better than that, but, but I've done the hand-drawn stuff and I understand how that process works. If there was engineering, none of us are qualified to be looking at that engineering anyways. I think that that is something that belongs in the domain of the building department. Having said that, I agree with the chair that if, you know, these drawings, which are really rudimentary, you know, if they turn out not to be accurate, if the actual building drawings are to differ from these drawings and we approve these drawings, then, then there needs to be some kind of a condition of approval or something to ensure that whatever is finally built does in fact match what we approve. And so I'm on board with that piece completely. I mean, obviously, I think it would be, it would have been better for the homeowner and for us if they had provided drawings that were more visually representative, a little bit more accurate. You know, something that we could, you know, understand better because, because they are rudimentary, they're tough, and they just lack details. So I'm concerned that, that what ends up being engineered is not going to look like this or things are going to have to be added. I share the concern of the chair. But I think I would be comfortable with a condition of approval that would bring it back to us if the engineering alters the look significantly.
With regard to liability, it's built now, presumably it's being used because there's Christmas tree lights on, so somebody was out there. What would be the liability if we were to approve it tonight and God forbid something happened before it went to the building department?
This is an architectural review board as you're functioning tonight, so you're responsible for the aesthetics of it.
Right.
Any liability would be on the homeowner or the person who constructed it.
Okay.
I don't know. I, again, Gloria, I feel that when somebody does something without a permit and doesn't do it through the proper codes and stuff, we shouldn't jump through hoops to make something happen. We should see every detail in the drawing, every board that's going to be in place as to what the thing's going to look like for side bracing and everything. Because you can't even see in your pictures how this thing is, how it goes down to the ground if it just sits on that old patio that's all cracked down there. So these were things that I was looking at and I don't know, I just feel that BAR is for aesthetics and we're supposed to see what it's going to look like.
I would make a recommendation then, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
I would say maybe you want to continue this and then have our applicant review this with our building official to satisfy structural questions. And then we just bring it back in January, so I think that would make all of us a little more comfortable making a decision with this. And I don't think waiting after, until after the holidays would be an extreme hardship in this case.
Commissioners, I mean, you've heard my point on the thing. My whole thing is our inspector never inspected the wood that's behind this that he stated was water-rotted. And how do we know that these things are going into some solid, just going in? And those are some of my concerns as well as are they going to need more braces that go off the side that attach it to the house somehow? But I would, I would be more than happy to continue this until we have the proper paperwork in front of us to look at something like this. But again, that's just one person on this commission, so we've got, you know, five others to, to decide on that, but.
Yeah, I would be in favor of the continuance as well.
I know I'm okay with approving it and trusting our excellent staff to make sure that things are followed through correctly. Obviously, the building official, you know, David knows what he's doing and he's gonna, he's gonna see to all that. I don't think that that's our responsibility in this instance. So I'm okay approving it, subject to some conditions, but I totally, I don't have a dog in this fight and I'll go either way, whatever the will of the business.
Okay, we'll go Commissioner, Commissioner Evans, what's your point on this?
I understood. What's your point on this?
Sorry, it's my Google. Google, turn down your voice, please. Sorry, guys. I guess Google and you have a thing, Mr. Evans.
Yeah, I was gonna say, she, she had more to say than I really do. You know, balconies are always tricky for me and not, not knowing how this is lagged into the house. That's, you know, that's a David Little issue for me. You know, aesthetically, I don't see anything wrong with it. It's certainly not the most attractive deck that I've seen in a long time, but you know, for something that's there, as long as the building department signs off on it and says that there's not going to be any water intrusion into the house and it's going to continue to stand for the next 20, 30 years, I'm ready to move forward.
Mr. Dodson? Oh, you already said, I'm sorry. Mr. Hun.
Well, well, I kind of agree with you, Chair Owens, a little bit of safety issue concerns. Either way, I know at the end we're going to approve this, you know, this deck. But says safety concern, I kind of agree with you. Maybe we can look at the, you know, what, what else needs to be done to, you know, get this the way, you know, the final, the way you, you feel like it's comfortable. But, you know, I think we can maybe continue this. Next time, like Laura said, so, you know, either way.
Very good. I am kind of lost here on my, my second computer doesn't want to help with me. Anyway, how about you, sir? Bye-bye. Arlington?
Yeah, I like to wait another month because I'd like to know that on the patio, how thick that patio is where the footing would, you know, where the posts are going to be on.
Very good. So we've got, what, four to two? So do we want to make a motion to, to put this off until January?
Yeah.
And if so, can I get a motion?
I move to continue this process until next month, when we can see the report from the building department.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I second that. Yeah, I agree with that.
All in favor? Aye. Oh, we gotta do a roll call anyways. Leslie?
It's their Commissioner Silva.
Aye.
Commissioner Winn.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner La Micah.
Aye.
Commissioner Dodson.
Aye.
Chair Owens.
Aye.
Motion to continue passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next is the reports from Commissioners. Is that correct, Leslie?
That's correct.
Anything from Commissioners? Come on, guys, you know, you know you got something.
Well, I am interested in what you're going to ask about the, the other thing.
Just stay online and we'll, we'll talk here in just a minute.
You're talking about the ones that are building.
Yeah, we don't want to.
Okay.
Chair, I've asked a couple of times now, over the last three, four months, about the Verizon tower that we approved a year and a half, two years ago, what the status of it was. And haven't heard back from staff on that. I'd like to raise that question again.
Very good. Anything else, Commissioners?
I'd love just an update, obviously, from staff on, on how the city's dealing with the new COVID shelter-in-place order, just kind of what's happening, what's happening, especially with our small businesses, our, our restaurants, you know, I just, you know, my heart is just going out to restaurant owners right now. This is, you know, a tough situation that I, you know, I think we need to protect against COVID. I'm just not sure the science supports some of what's being done to them. So just, I was curious about that. There was something else, construction-related, and I, if it comes to me, I will bring it up.
Very good. And I agree with Commissioner Silva on that about the restaurants. Man, their landlords aren't giving them any leeway. You know, they're, well, I'm sure Mr. Hun knows, his family has a restaurant and my God, my heart does go out to him. And I try to go to everyone in Seaside that I can do takeout in, just to try to, to boost our town here a little bit, but I know some of them are under extreme pressures.
I also wonder too, where outdoor dining is not okay, but then we have the skateboard park and I drive by that all the time and there's kids there. None of them have masks and they're 16 and 17. They can get it just as easily as anybody else. So why, why are they allowed to do that and the restaurants can't?
Yeah. No, I totally agree with all of you. It's, as Mr. Hun knows, I've been a patron of his parents, of his family's restaurant for years. And you want to see them stay in business. You know, wife and I were just talking about that today, how we can't wait till we're all inoculated and go back to eating out like we want to inside the restaurant. But outside is just as nice, you know, when they've got the heaters and everything, it works out very well. So hopefully we can get back to that very soon.
And thankfully, we're not in a snowstorm like New York or somewhere. But, you know, we should like to see the outdoor dining at least keep going and, yeah, so staff probably can enlighten us on, on, you know, if there's anything that can be done to support the restaurants, especially in other businesses.
Very good. Okay, so that is, Commissioners?
One thing I have.
Okay. Go ahead.
It's regarding drones, drones flying around. What's the rules and laws about that? You know, I was, I was wandering my garden yesterday or the other day and I hear some buzzing and looking up, I see a drone, you know, maybe 100 yards or something up there. You know, what is the rules? You know, our privacy, you know, I'm very, you know, concerned about, you know, residents' privacy regarding that. What is that?
I hear paintballs, okay, bullets aren't, so. No, I agree with, see, I luckily, I live in an area where they can't fly because of the airport.
Yeah, that's, that's my nitpick, you know, just drones flying around and, you know, you don't know who it is.
Right, and why are they doing it? Are they getting ready to raid somebody's house or something? You don't know.
No, it's not, it's not. I, I don't think it's the law enforcement or something, it's just.
Oh, I mean, the thieves.
Yeah. Yeah, that's my concern. Just, I just want to know what's, you know, about drones. What's the rules and laws about that in our, on our community neighborhoods?
So that leads to another question I've got, which is, you know, I know that the new mobility, we have, you know, electric scooters and people have electric bikes, e-bikes and all this stuff. What are the rules about the street legality of certain vehicles? For example, go-karts. Um, for example, go karts. Um, some people zip around on electric go karts or segways or different types of things like this on city streets. Is that, is, is that legal? Does that follow traffic laws? How does that work? I know that. You know, this is sort of an area of, of, of new evolution and new definitions as, as the, these new transportation mo- modalities. Come into play, but I'd, I'd be interested in what the city's position is on that as well.
Leslie, do you think we could find out about that?
Yeah, okay, so I have a list from the commissioners. Some of them I can address. I think some of them Gloria can address. Um, as far as the mobility for the street legality of things, the California Penal Code, from my understanding, is what regulates. Um, what can and can't go on cities, uh, on, on public access streets. So um. The, that's, that's what dictates what's legal and what's not legal, which ones have to be licensed. You have to be above a specific C C. Um, but you know what? Let me get those regulations and I can send them to the commission. Um, so you know what is and what isn't. So even on the rec trail, there's regulations about. Motorized vehicles and what can and can't go on the rec trail. And I know some of our local cities have been fighting for years. Whether Suris are allowed, what about the electric bikes? Those are an, uh, kind of a new thing on the scene and I don't think there's a lot of regulations on them. Um, I just bought my first electric bike so my daughter can keep up with us, right? And I'm seeing, when I went to try to buy a mountain bike for my son and all they had were electric bikes available right now. So I think it's something that we do need to kind of address. Um, let me look into the regulations and send those to you. As far as drones go, sorry, go ahead.
I could tell you about the, the bike path because. My wife and I were going to start a scooter business and they're not allowed on the bike path. So.
Yeah, uh, yeah, on certain persons of the bike path, but I think those regulations have changed recently. With, and it depends on your jurisdiction. So I mean, they were trying to prevent segways a few years ago. But, and that was prohibited, but now I think with the installation of the elec, the e-bikes, it, they can do segue tours now as well, so. I don't know. So Chair, maybe we can talk about that as well, what you know and what I've, what I've seen, so.
Very good.
That'd be great. So as far as drones go, I know the city of Seaside, um, our drone operators, because we operate drones out of both our fire and our police department. And um, we offer, operate the drone program for the emergency operation center for um, for, for the peninsula cities. We do not go over private residences, even during our Fourth of July enforcement, we made sure that we stayed over. Public access rights of way. So I do believe that there are regulations about going over public property or private property. But enforcement of that is what becau- is what becomes tricky. Because I see a drone, I don't see an operator because he may be. Uh, two streets down. So I do think there's regulations. I'll contact our fire department because I know um, one, our fire captain Schnudi is the one who's the specialist in this area on the peninsula. And I'll see if he can send me some information about that so we can all be informed accurately.
Yeah, thank you.
As far as business help and um, I think Gloria is the best one to answer that one.
Very good.
Covid, covid, as it relates to small businesses.
All right, but I'm going to start on the drone topic first because I've chased away a drone from my house once and I'll tell you how I did it. So I actually went outside and they were hovering by my patio quite frequently. So I finally went out and I had my phone in position and I shot video of it. And then I ran around to like. Go and quote unquote, chase them a little bit and holding my camera up and watching them the whole time. They took off and they have never since come back. So if you film them. They, that may discourage them too. So, and plus you're gathering evidence against them. So you have proof of what they're doing. Okay, so the businesses and covid, thank you for your concern for them. Um, they are indeed struggling. I was on a conference call today with MCCVB, the Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And we were talking about just some statistics about this latest shelter in place. And they expect, they know that there are thirty-six restaurants at least that are closing during the shelter in place. And they know that there's at least twelve hotels that will be shutting down during the shelter in place. Um, hotel vacancy rates are down to thirty percent on average throughout the county right now. And in the month of December, they expect it to be anywhere from eighteen to twenty-five percent occupancy. So a lot of our businesses are struggling right now. So the best thing that you can do to support our businesses is to shop local. And I remind everybody that it's not enough just to go and support them by going out to eat. It's a great thing that you do that. But it's the holiday season. We're all buying presents. Buy gift cards at your favorite restaurants and give them to people. That's another way that you can help these restaurants. So make sure that you're supporting them in every possible way that you can think of. The city has made um, loans available to the businesses. We advertise its availability on a regular basis. Once we get through the holidays, I'm hoping to have like a business conference day where we all have like maybe a two hour session with a bunch of resources available for the businesses. So that way they can hear about all of the resources that the county has. Um, that Seaside has and that hopefully maybe our new stimulus package that we keep rumble, hearing rumbling about. Um, we'll get the details on that and see what they, that might have to help the businesses as well. So we work with them every single day on trying to resolve their issues as much as we can. But it boils down to all of us trying to support them and shop local. So buy your gift cards. Encourage other people to go out and eat. That's the best thing that you can do to help save them because. I think one of the things that makes Seaside very unique compared to the others is our multiculturalism. And that's reflected in our ethnic city, ethnic dining places. When you think about it, any kind of food that you want, you can pretty much get that in Seaside and that's the great thing about it. If we lose those, we lose our charm. So I appreciate you thinking about the businesses. If you have other ideas. Um, as to how to support the businesses, I'm always open for suggestions. So you can just shoot me an email. And then regarding the Verizon Tower, my apologies, that slipped my brain. I will get on that for you for January. Sorry, Dave.
Thank you, Gloria. Okay. Since we had reports from commissioners, how about reports from staff?
So I have one quick one. I just wanted to let you guys know that City Hall is actually going to be closed for the holidays. The way that it fell was a little bit interesting this year. Because we're closed on Fridays. And are, and just the way that Christmas falls, we get Christmas Eve and Christmas Day off. But because we're closed Christmas, because we're closed New Years. City Hall will be closed from December twenty-fourth through the January first holiday. So it's probably the first time in a really long time we're actually closed for an entire week. So I just want to let you guys know there may be a little lack of responsiveness if you need anything, just because we're um, close to the holiday. A lot of our staff members are because of the uh, state home order. A lot of them are working remotely. So if you don't get them, when you call them. Just wait, they'll, they're supposed to check their emails and respond within a certain period of time or check their voicemails, but. Email. I just noticed everyone, everyone's responding to the email super snappy. So if you need anything, send an email, okay? But happy holidays to each one of you.
Same to you.
And I have a quick staff report. Um, I just wanted to remind everybody that there'll be a council meeting on January seventh and at that council meeting, I'll be giving an update on the general plan update schedule as well as the new zoning code. Um, and if you miss that, I can always do a repeat performance at the January Planning Commission meeting. And I wish you all happy holidays and I want to thank you for your service.
And the same to you. All of you that are working hard at the city hall. We give you our uh. Happy holidays.
And Mr. Owens, just, I just, one point of order, we did not take. The item, the business item out to the public.
The what? No, I'm sorry.
Our business item that we had tonight, we did not open it for public comments. And I just realized that because um, the member of the public has raised their hand and I failed to notice that. So I don't know if you want to potentially reopen public comments?
No, we can reopen public comment. If they've come this far, we'll hear them.
Okay, wonderful. Um, Mr. Zachary Grover.
A comment at this time for uh. I, I take it it's for the B A R twenty dash eleven?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So I apologize, I didn't see the hand raised earlier and didn't. Let you know sooner. So Mr. Zachary Grover, you can unmute yourself and speak on the item for up to three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Um, yeah, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to raise my hand uh, at that moment to um, address you guys. So that was actually my fault. Um, but what I wanted to originally just say is I sincerely apologize for not uh, taking the proper steps of. Getting the permit prior to building. The um, the deck. And then uh, thank everyone, Seaside Planning, as well as the, the Board of Architectural Review for reviewing it. Um, I did want to add that I haven't had the ability to move forward with the city of Seaside in terms of them reviewing the plans. Until this meeting happened. And so I just wanted to be clear that now with um. With your guys' statements that I can at least make that step forward so that we have something that we can look at for a potential review in uh. In January. And then uh, just lastly, i- if you did have any specific questions around. The um, the plans, I, I'm happy to answer them, including your question about the footings, which, which um, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to answer. But that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Grover. Yeah, the, the plans will help us out immensely to see how it's all laying together. But I thank you for that. Anything else?
Um, just that uh, if I could get an answer to the question that I now will be able to move forward with the city of Seaside in that, in the process. Because this kind of just seems a slightly like a feedback loop and that I need the. The, the S, B A R approval in order for them to review. Uh, to review the plans structurally. Um, and so will I now be able to, to review the plan structurally with the city of Seaside? So that we can then come back and have uh, the next step for when we, we all talk. Does that make sense? I'm sorry if it doesn't.
Yes, and Gloria, which one?
Exactly. I will work with you to, to work with the building department and make sure we get everything necessary for this item. To the bar for their next meeting.
Okay, great.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Grover. Um, on public comment, anybody else wishing to speak on the public comment can do so now. Please raise your hand. Leslie, do you see anybody?
Chair, that is, no, that's the only request to speak, sir.
Okay, we will close public, we will close public comment and bring it back for adjournment. Staff was complete, right?
Yeah.
Very good. So do we have a motion to adjourn? Anybody?
I'm with you, Chair.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to take a roll call on that?
No, sir, we're just accepting that is.
You kill YouTube and we'll talk about what we were going to talk about?
Yes, sir. Okay.